Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Mayor Council meeting for the Town of Berlin for Monday, May 23rd, 2022. Please join us in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item number one is the approval of the minutes of one A's regular session of April 25th, 2022.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, there was question, this is postponed from last meeting, there was a question about number six, the wording and the paragraph beginning with resident and ending with administration did. Thank you, Kelsey, for sending me the video, and after that, I think that we should add town in front of town administration. I thank for a little bit of clarity.
Thank you. So the, is there a motion to approve?
With that correction.
With the correction. I have a motion by Councilmember Oris with a correction to item number six. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Ner. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, let the record reflect that the regular session minutes of April 25th, 2022, with the amendment passed unanimously with Councilmember Burrell absent. Up next for the approval of the minutes from the executive session of May 9th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Oris.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, let the record reflect that the executive session minutes of May 9th passed unanimously. Agenda item number one C is the statement of closure for the executive session of May 9th, 2022. The date and time of the closed session were Monday, May 9th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. The location was council chambers for the vote, conference room for the discussion. The purpose of the closed session was a discussion referencing the promotion to the acting town administrator. Date and time of return to the public meeting was May 9th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. The recorded vote, the motion was made by Councilmember Oris, second by Councilmember Nichols. Members voting in favor were Councilmembers Ner, Nichols, and Oris. Statutory authority under the general provisions article 3 Act 305B to discuss the appointment, employment, and assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom the public body has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The actual items that were discussed were the promotion to acting town administrator, and action taken was the temporary title change of the deputy town administrator to the acting town administrator role, and the change in compensation retroactive to the actual start time, which was April 24th, 2022, and it was unanimously approved with Councilmembers Burrell and Purnell absent. That concludes the agenda item number one C. Up next is the regular session minutes for May 9th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ner.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, let the record reflect that the regular session minutes of May 9th, 2022 passed unanimously. Agenda item number two is a presentation that we had this evening by the Eastern Shore Regional GIS Cooperative from Salisbury University, and we have Mr. Logan Hall, who's a GIS analyst and also a Berlin resident, here to provide the presentation this evening. I do want to preface this with saying that Mr. Hall and I spoke, what, about almost a year ago about trying to conduct a housing study for the Town of Berlin. They're very busy, as you can imagine, so we were put on a waitlist. There was a cancellation that allowed us to be able to move into where we're at now, which is hopefully getting our, which is getting our housing study complete. That did come at a price of almost $17,000, which we did not have funded in our FY22 budget, because we didn't know about the study. And I want to recognize that the Tri-County Council is footing the bill for the entire study for the Town of Berlin.
Yeah.
Yes, huge thank you to Tri-County Council and the Eastern Shore Region of GIS. Go ahead, Logan.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for having me. I know everyone's time is valuable, so I'll try to keep it quick. I'm a guest lecturer at SU, and I typically lecture for three hours, so I'm going to keep this under 10 minutes if I can. My goal here is really just to inform everyone here, and everyone behind me as well, and everyone watching, that we're going to be conducting a field data collection effort this summer. It's actually starting next week, so. The Eastern Shore Regional GIS Cooperative is an outreach entity of Salisbury University. This initiative aims at identifying contributing factors leading to property degradation across towns on the eastern shore of Maryland, so, yeah, I'll try to keep this quick. How did we get here? Why should we care about this study at all? Let's keep our eyes on the city of Cambridge for a few minutes. Six years ago, we were approached by the city of Cambridge to conduct a housing study, and their initial question was, can you show us where the blighted homes are in the city? Well, that's a flawed question for a couple of different reasons. In our planning discussions, that one question evolved and became a series of more appropriate inquiries. Can we predict the behavior of an infrastructure system? Where and how do we focus our time, our energy, our money? And more importantly, can we make decisions based on data-driven information, right? Government is a matter of geography, and geographic information systems or GIS, they're transforming the way that we conduct public administration by empowering us to ask the right questions. So whether you are a city with a population of 5 billion or a small town with a population of 5,000, we all can benefit alike from having access to these advanced tools, these solutions, and understanding geospatial data as a whole. So what is happening in the Town of Berlin this summer? That's what we're coming down to, right? I'm going to have two interns in the field with iPads and a custom-configured application that I created that allows them to make observations of all property, primary structures in the town. We're looking for risk variables that lead to property degradation, so structure condition, accessibility to property, site attributes, unsafe site conditions, and public improvements. Each category is weighted, and each structure is given a cumulative score based on those observations, and then ranked negligible, moderate, considerable, and then on that ranking scale, we can plot and map out those results. So here is the pilot study from Ward 3 in Cambridge, and what we can do with those results is start to determine trends and start asking the right questions, right? So is property degradation actually concentrated in areas that we thought, or maybe the issue is widespread and concentrated elsewhere? So following our 2016 study, we found 45% of surveys to show substandard or risk of becoming substandard, which was much greater of an issue than they thought. Common issues included structural deterioration of exterior finishes, windows, doors, foundations, and roofs. While their previous grant proposals for revitalization funding failed to gain approval, now they could have data to support those proposals, and the city saw immediate shift in proposal acceptance following this data collection. Between 2016 and 2020, the city of Cambridge had been awarded $1.7 million in rehab and revitalization funds. Those awarded proposals relied heavily on this data being collected, and that initial study cost the city $25,000, which was actually funded by the Northern Regional Council, similar to what's happening this summer. I just received notification this morning, actually, the city has received a Phase 2 grant of $540,000, community development block grants, and another $80,000 from Habitat, where they just submitted another grant for $2.4 million pending approval. So we had the initial $25,000 study. We're looking at multimillion dollars of revitalization funds for the city. Summarizing Phase 1 progress, the city has acquired several properties already that were deemed blighted, provided home repair assistance, and coordinated new construction. Phase 2 planning includes additional acquisitions, owner-occupied home repair rehab programs in their Pine Street historic district. In 2017, we returned to the city and captured the remaining four wards, and in 2021, we ran the entire study again for a five-year update, and we looked at what progress had been made. You can see these are, this is called a heat map, so this is distribution of property degradation. So you can see that there's been a significant improvement over that five-year period. Now, we can't say for sure whether there's a direct correlation between the data collected and those proposals and this improvement. There's a lot that's happened in those five years, obviously. Surely, there's some level of natural change occurring on top of the funds awarded previously noted, but the city now is able to engage the community, hold interest group meetings to identify needs and wants of community members, and use this data to help support additional grant funding. So since our study in 2016, we've collected 48 surveys across the mid and lower shore. We're actually conducting our first in the upper shore this year with support from the Upper Shore Regional Council in Chestertown, and then we'll be conducting a single study on the lower shore in the Town of Berlin. As the mayor previously noted, the city of Salisbury was actually up, their funding fell through, so now we're doing the Town of Berlin. We're starting next week, so it's a very quick turnaround. We've got a kickoff meeting on Wednesday, I believe, to work on all the logistics, but we're really excited to get this data. As mentioned, I'm a resident homeowner myself in Berlin. I know the first question that pops up is, how is this going to be funded? Who's paying for this? Well, the good thing is that the town doesn't have to cough up a penny, which is great. The Tri-County Council for the Lower Eastern Shore is funding this project in full. It's close to $18,000 investment. Those funds come from rural Maryland Council through the Rural Maryland Prosperity Investment Fund. I recommend everyone take a look at that if you're not familiar with that fund. Our goal is to provide a complete database of survey results and a summary report back to the town by the end of the summer, and I want to highlight our primary role here is data collection. So the town may use this data to support whatever initiatives you guys may have, as you see fit. Should the town require assistance in analyzing, understanding, consuming that GIS data, the ESRDC would be glad to provide additional assistance on request. And while I'm here, I just wanted to make two notes. The Tri-County Council for the Lower Eastern Shore provides funds to the ESRDC in another realm as well, to provide GIS support to its jurisdictions. Responding to the need for onsite assistance with GIS-related tasks, we support staff with specialized solutions for a range of geospatial needs, of which the Town of Berlin is already a beneficiary. Last year, we developed two web mapping applications for arts and entertainment and planning and zoning, and the ESRDC will continue to support Worcester County in fiscal year 23 with funds coming from the Regional Council. And following the data collection this summer, we're going to be reaching out and seeing how we can help support you guys with additional GIS assistance. Again, not at the cost of the Town of Berlin. So, big thank you to Greg Padgeum and the Tri-County Council of the Lower Eastern Shore for this funding, and we're looking forward to getting started next week. You guys have any questions?
Did we say thank you to Tri-County Council?
Yes.
We cannot thank them enough.
Absolutely. In such short notice, though.
Right, I mean, the turnaround time and the responsiveness of Brandon's team and your team with Salisbury's ESRDC is impactful, so thank you. And the other thing I would add is that, looking at the arts and entertainment side, and then the planning and zoning application, Logan and I have talked about, one thing that comes up repeatedly is what home is in the historic district, which home is not, and possibly building out some way to be able to use that as a resource guide as well. But first and foremost is this project, going back to the city of Cambridge and their funding, just so that everybody's aware, it's my understanding that those funds are provided to residents to be able to make the improvements that have been identified in this study. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're a bit hands-off on that side. We're really stewards of the data and helping with analytics. Brandon Hessen was their economic development director at the time, and he was a huge champion of getting these proposals through. They've actually hired a housing specialist to help with directing those funds, and they helped special interest groups, and it's actually really cool, they brought out middle schoolers and high schools and community members and said, interviewed each age group and said, what do you guys want to see in this area? If the town or the city purchases this block of houses that need to be demoed, what do you guys want to see? A community garden? Do you want to see, you know, different parks or solutions that could go in to help the town or the city? So, yeah, it's interesting how they are leveraging that. I'm not really sure how they are prioritizing that funding, but I can provide the updates to you guys as well. I'm in constant communication with them, so.
Thank you. The other point is, is the assessment will determine foundation height.
Right.
And one of the key things that we hear a lot are stormwater preparedness. We do have our stormwater guru in the back, as well as, that's Jamie's department. So it will aid in that aspect as well.
Absolutely. I don't want to take up more time. I could sit here and talk all day about this. Yeah, the foundation height was actually a critical component for the city of Salisbury a couple of years ago. They couldn't get the funding. FEMA actually put in a majority investment because of the foundation height estimate that changed the project to be a flood mitigation study at that point. So what we can do, and we do this in Dorchester County as well, we know that there's issues with erosion and flooding. We can actually run those into some of the models that we're doing anyways for State Highway Administration and look at where a first floor might be flooded in some communities over others, and how certain houses might be affected with a certain flood event or periodic flooding, so really valuable information for sure.
So Logan.
Yeah.
Mr. Hall, excuse me. How does this, you said you're going to start next week, so like June 1-ish?
Yes.
So how does this look exactly? You said you, the people have iPad, where they're walking onto property, what, how do they?
No, they will not access private property. So June 1st will be at our office in Salisbury, I train them on everything they need to know. They'll show up in SU-marked vehicles, they'll have little name tags, there'll be two students with iPads, they walk the sidewalks. What I tell residents that show concern is, it's no difference in me riding a bike around and saying, this house has roof damage, this house has siding damage. They're going to be accessing all their data points from public accessible areas, so there's really no concern. And then that data will be, what's nice about that data is, we can compare it against those other 48 towns, so instead of one of us going out and collecting this information ourselves, we can actually directly compare that with the methodology that we've put together and say, how does the Town of Berlin compare to Oxford, or St. Michael's, or Trap, or Ridgely, right?
So I guess my other question is, I mean, is it going to be, are there going to be residents that their public address is going to be shown as degrading?
The information we deem sensitive, so we don't put this out publicly, we provide it to the town, and it's really for you guys to do as you please. We've actually put together web applications that have a private login required, so if you guys wanted to have access to it on the council or in your office, we can provide that for sure. The database, we don't put out publicly, we don't put out public maps. So it is a point-by-point assessment, though.
And then I guess, this is really for us, how are we going to notify residents if this is starting next week?
So that's, as Logan mentioned, we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday. It is a Zoom meeting, and it's got a lot of our staff points in there, and then we're going to coordinate through social media. That's the reason why Logan's here as well, to help provide an overview of what's going on, to help people hear it in multiple points.
I mean, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it'll be.
Just want to make sure people.
What are you going to do in the instance of residences that are not street-side? Because there are a few houses, homes, that are not, so you're going to have to, what are you guys going to do?
Those are unfortunately omitted from the data set, unfortunately. We ran that quite extensively in Oxford and someone where there's long driveways and large hedges, and unfortunately, those houses just don't make it into the study. Safe is number one for me for our students, so I'm never going to put them in danger having access to private property or go down a driveway, so. And with that, if they're ever in a situation where they feel uncomfortable, I tell them to leave, we can always get the data later. And in Salisbury, we had a couple instances where we had to ask local law enforcement to just be onsite with our students collecting the data, which, you know, that's part of our coordination and logistics, we're doing that all the time, so.
Logan, just one follow-up question. Will the data collectors be taking photographs from the street of the properties?
It's a great question. Yes, the photos are deleted on delivery. The photos are for me and my team for quality control and assurance, so if they take a survey and say there's roof damage and there's siding damage, I want to make sure that they're collecting that data accurately, and then those photos are removed from the survey, they are on a secure server with our team, login access only, and they are scrubbed from the data at delivery.
Yeah, my issue is residents may have concerns when two people are standing out front, taking pictures of the properties, not knowing what's going on.
Yeah, we give our students a handout that explains the project. They can hand that to the resident in a situation where they are concerned, and it has my contact information. I've had hundreds of calls, and I've dealt with residents quite often, and explained the project, and most of the time, they're comfortable with it. There may be situations where they call you guys and you can defer to us, or hopefully you feel comfortable enough with the information provided, that you can explain the study.
We need to get that. We're going to make, that's the whole purpose of the Wednesday meeting, is to walk through that material, what goes out, how it's disseminated, but the whole part of this was that I think people need to hear it a couple times, and that's why we wanted to have Logan here this evening to discuss that publicly, and then following Wednesday, this is a pretty quick timeline, so we will be pumping that out. Hopefully, our friends with the press will help get the message out as well, so.
And if you guys want to delay it, that's fine. We just, our interns are ready, yeah, they're ready June 1st, so we'd like that. We only have until July 15th, so we want to get them in the field as soon as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea and the premise. I just want people to know.
Right, absolutely.
For sure.
No, it's wise. I mean, we've had some towns that wanted to not inform residents, and that's their problem. We always put out a statement with the university, but the towns aren't typically going to reach out and see that notice, so that's really for our staffing. But yeah, we are totally on board with being transparent and high levels of information to get, so. And if I can help with that at all, just let me know.
Oh, we'll definitely go.
Okay.
Thank you, Logan. Any other questions for Logan before this?
All right.
Thank you. We'll see you on Wednesday.
Yep.
All right, agenda item number three is the appointment of boards, commissions, and committee members. I do have one appointment this evening, there's a letter in the packet for Ms. Betty Tustin. She's willing to serve on the Board of Supervisors of Elections for a four-year term. We are looking for one additional member, so you approved three members, which, and then Gina. So of the three members, Mr. Preston Whaley will not be on the committee, he's changed his mind as it relates to that, so we are still looking for one person, and we're hoping that Ms. Betty Tustin will help round out that team, but we do still need one additional. So I am looking for an approval this evening for Ms. Tustin.
Motion to approve Betty.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ner, a second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and let the record reflect that Ms. Betty Tustin has been approved her four-year term on the Board of Supervisors of Elections. All right, agenda item number four is a proclamation, 2022-05, proclaiming June 20th to the 26th, 2022, as municipalities observance of National Pollinator Week as an affiliate of Bee City USA. And I'll be reading the proclamation, then I will let Economic and Community Development add any points about the committee, since they do VAs with that group. First of all. I did get a letter from an Eleanor, she's a six-year-old, so we will be sending her the proclamation. She was thanking us for being a bee city, so I have that here this evening. I was just trying to see if she was in attendance.
Might be her bed.
Right, it's possible, but. A proclamation of the Mayor Council of the Town of Berlin, proclamation 2022-05, proclaiming June 20th to the 26th, 2022, as our municipalities observance of National Pollinator Week as an affiliate of Bee City USA. Whereas pollinator species, such as thousands of species of bees, are essential partners in producing much of our food supply, and whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, biodiverse urban and suburban ecosystems, and whereas the pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing quality of life, creating recreational and economic development opportunities, and whereas for decades, the Town of Berlin has managed town landscapes and public lands that include parks as a wealth, wildlife habitat, and whereas the Town of Berlin provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation, stewardship, and protection of pollinators, and maintenance of their habitat and environment. And now therefore, I, Zach Temple, Mayor of the Town of Berlin, do hereby proclaim June 20th to the 26th, 2022, as National Pollinator Week, and urge all of our citizens to recognize this observance. Thank you. Ivy, would you like to add anything about our pollinator?
Sure, thank you for making that proclamation, Mayor. Just wanted to let anyone know if they have any desire to be part of our committee for Bee City. We are, we are doing a variety of things to bolster knowledge about how important bees are. The alleyway in between Island Creamery and Gilbert's Provisions is going to become known as Pollinator Way, and we have a local artist who's going to be painting on that sidewalk. A variety of things for kids to do, flatter arms like a butterfly, buzz like a bee, and then working with the beautification committee of Berlin, we're going to be installing bioretention rain gardens. And also Kate Patton with Lower Shore Land Trust, she is on our committee, and she has a variety of things to be going to start, a rain garden, a pollinator garden in your own backyard. So anything that you have questions on, please feel free to stop by my office, talk to me, and talk to Allison.
Thank you. Agenda item number five is motion 2022-04, the approval of applying for the DHCD Community Legacy Grant for additional facade grant funding, and our Economic and Community Development Director, Ivy Wells, is going to run point on that.
Thank you. Just wanted to ask permission to be able to write a community legacy grant this year. We typically write one every year. Most of the time, it's for facade grant funding. We received facade grant funding two years ago, $50,000, and that is close to being depleted, so we will need to apply for additional facade grant funding, specifically with the amount of new businesses that will be opening up on Main Street, William Street, and Pitt Street with the new construction. Those businesses will need some additional help, and what we do is we apply to Department of Housing and Community Development. They give us the grant, then we, my department facilitates the grant process, they apply to the town, we send their application to DHCD, who reviews it with MHT, which is Maryland Historic Trust, they get it back to us, we okay the grant, there's a dray of paperwork in between all of that, we issue them a reimbursement, and then I put the paperwork in to get the reimbursement from DHCD. So it's just a pass word, it's just a pass-through grant, and so I'm asking permission to be able to apply for that, again, to help our business community out. Town of Berlin benefited from that last year. $20,000 of facade grant funding helped pay for the windows on Town Hall. There's absolutely zero cost involved to the Town of Berlin for this grant.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion. If there's no questions, we approve 2024-04.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Oris to approve the application for DHCD facade grant funding. I have a second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, let the record reflect that motion 2022-04 passed unanimously. Up next is agenda item number six, which is a review of the appraisal for the parcels that encompass Heron Park. It is a draft, as you see within the packet, it's also, I think, an important distinction, it is not in the packet that you have here, but it is available online for anybody that wishes to review that appraisal. The reason that it is in a draft capacity, Mayor, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that they are looking to see if the Mayor and Council have any points of clarity that we would like to identify within the appraisal before we get the final draft. So that is my first question to the group.
I didn't have any questions.
Okay, anybody else, anything to? Okay. So then the next point of this was that we ordered the appraisal to give us more information regarding the parcels of Heron Park before we decided to potentially move into an extended negotiation period with a proposer or proposers. I think that based off of our last meeting that we had, that when we heard from each group that there was one particular entity that was more Berlin than the other, and a better fit for the surrounding community, and I believe that was the Gillis-Gilperson group, so what I'm asking is that, and we have to do this publicly, that we would enter into an extended negotiation period with Gillis-Gilperson as it relates to those parcels. It's not selling them, but it allows us to be able to meet with them more and whittle down to the finer points of an agreement that would have to be approved publicly.
Excellent.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Oris to enter into an extended negotiation period with Gillis-Gilperson.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and let the record reflect that the council, Mayor and Council wish to move forward with an extended negotiation period with Gillis-Gilperson as it relates to the parcels of Heron Park identified in RFP. With that being said, one point before we move on to agenda item number seven, the town attorney recommended that we identify a subcommittee to work through that negotiation period, so I will be sending out an email to the group, just so that all of you are aware, up to two council members will participate in that, in that subcommittee, and then those findings would then be, or. and then those findings would then be, or recommendations would be forwarded to the group in its entirety. So just keep an eye out for that email, and we will be looking to move forward with that pretty quickly. All right, agenda item number seven is motion 2022-05, which is the approval of ARPA spending plan. We discussed this, it was a discussion item, with the introduction of the budget during our last meeting. And the only change to this plan is that you will see that the general fund down all the way at the bottom in the phase, or payment to, general fund margin of error slash revenue, which is kind of that area where if a project comes in underbudgeted, that that would then go into this category for future allocation in FY '24. That has been broken out to allow for stormwater with projects to be determined, which is the line above it. This expenditure will be used for stormwater projects, as requested by the council in the last meeting, for $250,000. I do want to recognize that Darrell is here with us this evening. Darrell, do you mind just coming up for just a brief moment, just to explain to the group? We were going to put Darrell on the agenda, but then due to some other things that occurred, we opted for bringing him in this evening, allocating $250,000 for projects to be determined, and hopefully getting Darrell on the agenda in June to discuss some more projects and leveraging of these funds. But I did want to have Darrell explain briefly about the capacity to tackle some of our stormwater concerns with, or with an allocation of $250,000.
Sure. Well, Darrell Colar with EA Engineering. So with an allocation of that amount, what I would vision is like a two-pronged approach, where we can use some funds to apply, aggressively apply, leveraged funds versus funding. And in the past, you know, when we didn't have a good, you know, percentage for a leveraged fund for a grant application, we were less qualified. I think we'll be much more qualified with a higher percentage for a project than leveraged fund, rather than using that chunk of change for just one project. That way, we can, you know, piece off some of that to do some of the other, maybe straightforward infrastructure projects that we need, maybe a culvert replacement, stuff like that. Those projects are typically less likely to be applicable to a grant application. With the exception, there are grant fundings, and I want to look at that as well for those types of projects, meaning like FEMA or MIMO, that'll be administered through FEMA. So that requires a 25% match by the town. But that project would be something like, you know, finishing up over Franklin and Maple. You know, that's culvert replacement that we need, and some conflicts that we need, and some sewer that we need to get out of the way. That's not a water quality project that most of the grant funding opportunities are geared towards these things. But that very well could be a project that FEMA would be interested. We haven't typically been aggressive with those because it's a high percentage match, it's a 25% match. And I was very interested to hear Logan speak as well, because the elevations and the flood limitations will show very well in a grant application for FEMA. And we can obviously demonstrate a history of nuisance flooding in that area. So, so something like that approach, and then we, where I started from, for like a water quality project, if in the area of, say, Westminster and Abbey, in the town-owned parcel, if we want to expand that into the Paper Street parcel at Abbey and Westminster. That could be an area that would be a water quality component project, as well as the area in Henry's Mill, Henry's Green. If we did something with offline stormwater facility, offline wetland, like we did over in Flower Street in Hudson. That's, you know, a water quality project. Those projects have, we've had success. You know, we got funding for the Flower Street project through CDBG and through DNR. We got similar, similar to our wetland project for a grant. We got funding through Chesapeake Bay Trust. So some next steps, I think we can, you know, polish something and put something more detailed together in June in terms of prioritization options, you know, some estimates and stuff like that, to talk in more details. Because the grant funding cycle is really, the end of August, really fall, and they're due December, January timeframe. So right now is a great time to plan this, get some concepts together, and get a really polished grant application and plan together. We, we contact them now, get them, invite them to come out to the sites, and we show them. They're not unfamiliar with the Town of Berlin. They've been here many times and know a lot of these projects. Some of them are eager to do. We had a tour with Sea Grant about a month and a half ago, so right came. And we showed them some of the facilities. Actually, it was a showcase of the work that we've done. They contacted the town and said, hey, can we do a tour of all these projects and leave it? And so we took that opportunity and showed them some more that we want to do, and they're interested. They didn't guarantee anything or say we're going to do it, but they, they are interested.
And I think the important takeaway is that Darrell has some projects in mind that would keep us on track with our plans, help accomplish some of our goals. We would put that type of presentation together for probably the second meeting in June to give Darrell and the team enough time to be able to move forward with bringing a well-construted grant application. So, any questions for Darrell as it relates to that? I know we want to bring him back in, but.
It's not a question, it's just a, it's just a thank you, you know, stormwater. I'm glad that we're at a point where we could focus on this a little bit more, and, well, you know, thank you.
Very welcome. I, it's my passion, I, so I'll have you go.
Yeah, the only other thing is Nelson Avenue.
Yes.
Next on the list, right?
Well, when I said Franklin, that's the second half of Nelson is a Franklin.
I just want to make sure I said it, because it's 14 years you've only on the council. Told those guys we had a meeting, you're next, you're on the list. Well, we're right up the list now, so.
Yes, the design is complete without.
I know.
Yes. We're waiting for dollars.
I think it's a great idea.
Yep. Yeah, I really like that vision of, of, you know, doing a couple things, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there.
Thank you, Darrell. I appreciate it. So agenda item number seven is the entire ARPA spending plan, motion 2022-05. We are looking for approval this evening.
Mayor, I have a question. Please be clarified before you debate on that now.
Yes, just name and street name, please.
Mayor, I have a question. 307 and Dry. Want to be clear, because the last council meetings, the council has said net, they don't want this in the spending. Is the 52,000 or 54,000 that would give every business owner their $75,000 back, is that out of this money now?
I think the important thing to.
No, no, don't circle me. Just yes from that. Is the money out? Was the council said they didn't think it was necessary, or is it, or is it in there?
There is $54,000 in the ARPA spending plan as proposed. There is the ability for the council to amend, and I think the important thing to note is that how that grant will be divided is yet to be determined. So the $75,000 is a metric that we use to calculate where we got to the 54,000, but it's not the metric that would be used for.
Why, why, why is it?
Carol, Carol. If you give me a moment, I'm about to make a motion to make that amendment, so just give me a second.
And one, okay, and one of the, and one of the things, $92,000, police department.
Carol.
To use your money to get this man to get down on Nelson Avenue. Please don't take that money out the street and burn it up. It's ridiculous. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you, Ms. Oris.
End with that. I'm going to make a motion. We amend the ARPA spending plan and remove $124,000 from the mobile radio allocation and $54,000 from the grant to businesses and put it into a stormwater capital improvement fund.
Thank you. The only point I would make with the removal is that those two would be an amendment to the budget. So we just, if they are acted upon, we'll just have to move those out of the FY '23 budget, so. The only point I would say.
I'm sorry, when you, when you made the motion, did you, at the end, did you give the new dollar amount?
The new dollar amount would be $178,000 to the stormwater capital improvement fund.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Nurr to remove $124,000 from the line item slated, police, public works, water resources, electric, mobile radios, and portables, to make that item, I think, what is it, $115,000?
Yes.
Yes, that will still fund the chief's requested radios.
And then to remove the businesses, grant to businesses, $54,000, and to take that balance and move it down to the stormwater projects to be determined, to increase the line item that says $250,000, to make that 250 plus 178,000.
Correct.
All right, I need a second. Second by Councilmember Purnell. All in favor say aye.
Wait, wait, wait.
Vote.
I just heard you were mentioning, I'm sorry, I'm interrupted. You mentioned a budget amendment, budget, those items on fiscal '23. If you decide and then adopt the budget tonight with the correction, no budget amendment needed.
Correct. Yeah, we're saying that the change would just need to be noted in the next quarter, but I believe council.
I just had a question if Councilmember Nurr would consider splitting the 178 between stormwater and the community center reserve fund.
Not at this time. I think stormwater is a major priority for this town, so I'd rather see that amount go towards stormwater, so we can capitalize that, get grant money, and do what we need to do with this town.
And we do have a sizable balance in the community center portion. Just, just so that I'm accurate on the vote, I had a motion by Councilmember Nurr, a second by Councilmember Purnell, in favor with Councilmember Nichols, Councilmember Oris. How do you vote?
In a vote.
In favor of the motion to amend, passed unanimously. Now we do need a motion. Well, that was a motion to approve with the amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I sent an email to the Mayor and Council, and the same as your stormwater consultant stated, we can leverage these SCBA funds, if the same verbiage is used. I did talk to FEMA today. Just changing the verbiage similar to you have with stormwater, to say this expenditure will be used to fund Berlin Fire Company capital expenses, but if you list specifically that product and we receive that grant, they will look at this as supplanting of funds, because you approved in your budget specifically those items. So that could reduce the $440,000 grant that we all told you that we applied to the Department of Homeland Security and FEMA. So I urge you to do the same thing. You just heard stormwater management. If you'll change that verbiage, we could possibly leverage those grant funds of $220,000 to another grant. But if you pass that specifically, that product, that will probably most definitely, depending on what project manager has signed our grant, if we receive it, they could say that's supplanting of funds, because they would pull your budget up and see that, and they'd say, we already have budgeted, let's reduce the FEMA grant by this amount of money that's in the budget. So I urge you to make that amendment, and then we would say to stormwater management, in September, when we find about these grants, we would come back to Mayor and Council and let you know whether we got that grant or not. So again, it's just a placeholder to leverage, possibly leverage $220,000.
Thank you. So the request from the fire company would be to make the fire portion, instead of saying self-contained breathing apparatus SCBA, to say fire, or projects to be determined, but that would not mean that the $200,000 or $220,000 could be used on anything without approval from the council.
That's correct, and I would, I would urge you to put the word capital in there. It's for capital, one-time expenses. Because we presented a letter that had more than the self-contained breathing apparatus. I think it had three projects, if not four. I apologize, I can't bring that under my phone. Just don't be, do the same verbiage you have for stormwater management, and yes, we have to come back to the public to give approval for that capital expenditure. It may be, may still be needed for self-contained breathing apparatus if we don't receive that grant. It would just be a same.
But if you receive the grant, you won't need the monies?
That's, that's correct. We could move it to one of those other capital projects on that list that we presented.
Is that the same for the heart monitors?
The heart monitors, you can leave that as it is, but we are, as on the suggestions you made, we are preparing, I meant again last week, with another foundation person. If we get that, foundation guard is strict, but the federal grant and the federal grant, we don't want to get called supplanting funds. Your findings are mature, you can give you and Ms. Mary, you've been here a long time, supplanting funds.
Do you have any recommendations, Natalie?
Well, it's a little different situation that we discussed in prior. I was not aware those breathing apparatuses possibly could be fully funded by the grant.
We don't know what amount can be funded by that.
Exactly. So right now, if you are assigning capital to be assigned in the future and fire company will receive full grant for the breathing apparatuses, that would be your decision to continue awarding 220 for the future capital projects or not?
The valuation of 220 was reached, because that was a request for capital items, but I, I hear what the president of the fire company is saying, and it's up to this body whether they want to amend to make it say projects to be determined with approval of the council or keep it as self-contained breathing apparatus.
So Dave, what, Mr. Fostrel, what you're saying is, just the terminology that's there puts your grant application at jeopardy?
It could be, it could be, it could definitely be determined by FEMA, it's supplanting of funds. Because if we are awarded the $440,000 grant, we will have to provide updated financial statements. And in that, they could very well, and we would have to disclose that the Mayor and Council approved specifically $220,000 for that project, and they would say, you're getting the, you're getting 220 from the town, why are we going to grant you 440?
Okay. So if, if we do change the terminology, we would just change that on the budget side?
It would, no, the budget's one-time capital, right? Those, those get.
Get a project to be.
Correct. They're not part of the public.
Well, this, this break down of the ARPA spending plan, the wording will be just changed. And the same thing on the budget in the details, the wording would be changed.
Right.
But beside of all this, I think there is a different decision need to be put in place for the future.
And we'll come back to you, Mayor and Council. We'll come back to you. FEMA helped us today, said they still are on a timeline of September, October, end of this federal fiscal year, beginning next, this federal fiscal year, to let us know about that work. So we'll be back to you in October if you get up to you, and then you can make your.
I feel like I'm a bit confused here about the timing. So October, you may know more, but you might not until January. So technically, we wouldn't be.
It's like you think about January, man.
No, I'm sorry. I thought you said until the end of the fiscal year.
The federal fiscal year.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said fiscal year, not.
Federal fiscal year, September, October.
Okay, so, so October, you would, you would have a definite as to what's going to happen or not?
That is what the hope does go into today.
Okay, because I was thinking between October and December, and in my mind, I'm thinking, wait a minute. No, I'm sorry. That's, I'll keep it in my head, that part.
No problem. Collect questions before this group, with the feedback from the president.
Is that a motion? Will we have a motion?
You would have to make the motion to amend the motion 2022-04.
So, okay. All right, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we amend the language for the ARPA spending plan under FIRE to strike SCBA and replace with.
Projects.
Capital projects to be determined, as approved by the council.
And is your request to do the same thing with the monitors while we're here?
He said they were okay.
So it's just for the fireside. So I have a motion by Councilmember Oris to make the fire item strike self-contained breathing apparatus and make projects, capital projects, to be determined with approval of council.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that the amendment to motion 2022, oh, no, yeah, 2022-05, the ARPA spending plan passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Logan.
Um, let's see. Agenda item number eight is the public hearing on ordinance 2022-04. Overview is being led by the planning director. is being led by the planning director, David Angler.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is ordinance number 2022-04, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the town of Berlin, Maryland, amending chapter 108 entitled zoning, Article 6, districts and district regulations, Division 5, Section 108-403, entitled lot area width and yard requirements. And you'll see, I don't know, Kelsey, if you have it.
I do not, Kelsey.
The minimum requirements were changed, this is basically to allow for fee simple lots within townhouse developments, or what we typically see as a townhouse arrangement of condominium projects. Typically, the yard requirements are just townhouse or condo unit yourself is what you own. We had a project coming up at Westview out of Purnell Crossing that the owners wanted to have an extended yard for each, and when we, we looked into this, we found that other jurisdictions all around the area have provisions for fee simple lots with townhouses, and we did not on the books. So the minimum lot area has not changed, so the calculation of how many units you can get on a specific square foot is a specific acreage, has not changed. So it wouldn't allow for any denser developments, it just allows for how that property is conveyed by the developer. And we had our first reading at the last meeting, I don't recall you had too many questions, if you have any questions, the applicant, Mr. Malone is here tonight, which is legal representation, I don't, you have questions of me or questions of them?
Thank you. Any questions for Dave before we open up the public hearing?
No.
Either Dave? Okay. So let's open up the public hearing for ordinance 2022-04. Anybody wishing to address the Mayor and Council, please come forward, name, property, address, or who you represent, please.
Thank you very much. For the record, Mark Spencer Cropper, 6200 Coastal Highway, Suite 200, Tennessee, Maryland. I'm the attorney for Mr. Malone. I think I'm also the applicant for this, to tell you the truth. And because this is a text amendment, it's applicable throughout the town of Berlin, it's not site-specific. I'm a firm believer that a picture is worth a thousand words, so I'm sure you don't want to hear a thousand words from me, so I'm going to give you some pictures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That should be enough, take one, pass. And what I'm handing you, the two-page document, make sure you have it, do you have it all? Okay. It's a two-page document, and first page is reflecting, should the Mayor and Council approve this text amendment, you see the townhouses with lot lines creating yards for each townhouse. If you go to the second document, the next page, that's the other method by which townhouse developments occur, where you basically have one lot with stacks of townhouses on the one lot. The first page, each townhouse is on its own lot, that's the only difference here. The project basically looks the same to the public, it's just a different way to convey the townhouses, and there is a desire by many now to own your own yard with your townhouse versus it being common areas where anybody within the project can basically access and use your backyard. It's more private, it's just a preferred way to develop a townhouse project, and when Mr. Malone, who's my client seated to my right, proposed this type of development in Berlin, as Mr. Engelhardt indicated, the Berlin code is simply silent on this. So we are before you tonight to revise the code to allow this method of townhouse development. Also, as Mr. Engelhardt indicated, it doesn't change the density calculations at all, we don't gain any units as a result of this, it's just a different method by which to convey these units. Mr. Engel has the same rendering, a larger version of it, but it's, on each side of this board are the same things you're looking at on the two pages. That's the presentation, we're here to answer any questions, but that's really all we have to offer.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cropper?
Yeah, I have one question, Mark. Given this new way of doing it, would each individual owner then be allowed to, if they so desired, fence in their entire property?
Well, obviously, there should be covenants, there's going to be an HOA, right? And they have nothing drafted yet, but that's something that-
That would be covered under-
That would be covered under covenants, that's correct.
Right.
So would this be for future projects or are pre-existing and from this point forward?
This point forward, because up to this point, the town of Berlin, you couldn't do this.
Right.
So-
So no, so nobody gets retrofitted?
Not, not to my knowledge, no. And everybody that's acquired their townhouses so far acquired them under the existing code, not the new code.
Got it.
Should you look favorably-
As proposed.
Yeah, as proposed, should you look favorably on the request.
Any additional questions for the act? All right, that's it, we'll, do you have anything further? Anybody else in attendance this evening that would like to address the Mayor and Council as it relates to ordinance 2022-04? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And then with that being said, we are looking for action from the council this evening on ordinance 2022-04.
Motion to approve 2022-04.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ner to approve ordinance 2022-04.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Oris, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And let the record reflect that ordinance 2022-04 passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much, good evening.
Thank you.
Next time you give them a push on the agenda first.
Up next is the ordinance, up next is the ordinance 2022-05, approving FY '23 budget as submitted. Myself and the finance director will run point on this. Before we open the public hearing on ordinance 2022-05, I do want to thank all of our departments for their work in compiling the FY '23 budget, and the council for all of their input and feedback regarding the budget crafting as well. It may be introduced by me as the mayor, but I think it is a pretty good summary of us all coming together to address the, the projects that we have ahead of us for FY '23. So with that being said, I will open up the public hearing for ordinance 2022-05. Anybody wishing to address the Mayor and Council?
David Fitzgerald, President of Berlin Fire Company, Berlin Fire Company, Northern 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 Fire Company, First, thanks for including in the budget the American Rescue Funds, I think that's a start to our capital improvements that we need, and we need to continue that conversation, and don't come to the table empty-handed, I think we need to continue to talk about the revenue side, which, with the suggestions of the slot revenue, as you pay off the police department, public safety is eligible expense, using them for fire EMS and police, we're all public safety, a big thing, something that needs to be discussed. Also, public safety impact fees, you said a developer leave here again, and we related to the budget again, impact fees, revenue, we need to be included at the table on these planning of these developments. We can provide you historical data of those same subdivisions, what that impacts on fire EMS, and consider charging impact fee. Last night when we asked this, we got a letter that the fire marshal does all this. Our marshal does not do that, our marshal reviews life safety, our marshal does not review operational impacts. We have that out, in addition to these, common was, you'll never be out there, we've been out there for several balcony fires, vehicle fires, people stuck in elevators, medical. So when you put these laws about, then we need to be at the table, the planning commission in the Mayor and Council provides an impact statement, and you also also look at public safety impact fees, because we may need a piece of specialized piece of equipment to pack it out there, though. So that's relating all to the budget. Just as a reminder, I sent a letter to Mayor and Council, we're flat-funded operationally, again, capital, we stepped up to the plate, we appreciate that, but operationally, again, we're flat-funded. I went to the budgets, or whatever it is, I'm not going to bore you with that, you all developed the budget, just use fuel, for example, every department got an increase in fuel, anywhere from six to 25 percent. We have to pay the same amount. So if we're going to do the best we can, if the Mayor and Council doesn't have, have taken to amend the budget now, or take ahead, that we come in, as we give the quarterly reports, amend the budget, and help us out, we'll do the best we can. But again, we cannot continue operationally to have a flat budget. You treat us as a contractor, you all wanted the contract, but we present the contract, proposing service, and you even accept it or reject it. So what really I'm here to say is both operationally, the flat budget is going to be a detriment to the fire and EMS. It's definitely going to reduce the fire, because when you lump those numbers together and you ask us, and we will give you a number, once we know the total, if you approve the budget tonight, more always has to go to the ambulance, because that's where our personnel comes, so we have no choice, we got to pay the employees, we got to pay their health insurance. You all know it goes up. So every year, more goes to the fire, eventually the fire, to EMS, eventually the fire's going to get nothing. I mean, since, this might shock some people, but since we were flat-funded in 2008, we've had a reduction over 11 years of 1,168,515 of fire funding since 2008. We just would have been flat-funded, no increases. So that is a big number that we have used our reserves, what have you. So we have very serious concern, we've got the S9 very late, looking at our operations, giving the detailed sheets of operations, we'll have to be cut, we're not funded, and there is where we are. The same thing for the EMS, capital funding, three ambulance is going to be due, we have 1,024 of the bank, with 900,000 of the ambulance to stay in the face of the next five years. We do appreciate 125,000 allocation for emergency medical services, that's very important. We did some notes in the Mayor and Council, we would like some flexibility with that, the mayor offered that before, if we can still accomplish that goal, to let us have money, so we would like you to at least amend that part of the budget and say, whatever you have to say about the legal guru or the financial guru, to still allocate that, and we will still meet the goal of the four people working, but if we can do that for a little less than 125, allow us, allow that to remain in EMS budget operation. So that's all I have to say, Mayor and Council, again, we appreciate it, but the operational budget, us continue to be flat, is just not, not going to work.
Thank you. So I do want to clarify just a couple points, that the value of the grant was relayed to the fire company in February, that it would be 400,000 dollars at introduction, but that we understood that the primary goal was to try and reach a level of additional staffing, which is why we allocated the 125,000 as it, as requested. As the president mentioned, we have had dialogue about potentially utilizing those funds to cover the funding gap that has been identified by the fire company, but that's really in, we're looking for some recommendations on, on their behalf, which does not have to be solved this evening for the budget passage, but the way that that's going to work is there would be 525,000 for the fire company. It's noted in the comments that that is earmarked for personnel, but we do have some time to work that out as well. I would note that this year, President Fitzgerald, and I think you'll agree with me, last year you got 400,000, this year we're closer to the 800,000 mark with the inclusion of the capital funds that we're trying to help you, help you reach, which have been identified by the fire company and EMS. So we, we are working toward those incremental things of increasing that operational grant. This year, it is going up by 125,000 to help cover the cost of personnel or other things as we can work through that as a group, but I don't think that requires a budget amendment this evening. But I do think that, well, first, before we get to the, the other motions, is anybody else wishing to address the Mayor and Council as it relates to ordinance 2022-05 for the public hearing? Okay. We'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2022-05. The one thing I would ask the council to do is make the same motion for the amendments from the ARCA plan to include the reduction in the mobile radios by 124,000, the text amendment for the fire to include the capital projects to be determined with approval of council, the reduction of the 54,000 for the grant to the businesses, and we did not have the Stormwater in there because it's projects to be determined, so those funds would be just removed from the budget.
So move? So move? Can we do that?
Yeah, so you want to identify the accounts?
I, I think.
Do we need to identify?
I can make necessary changes on the accounts. So basically, your capital, capital improvements on the Stormwater will be increased with no specific details, except the 110 that we have currently allocated to Washington Project will remain unchanged. And then the capital under general fund for, under the police department, under the radios will remain at 11,500, and that amount will be moved to Stormwater. 54,000 will be moved from the general fund from the economic grant and moved to the Stormwater Fund. So there will be a decrease and increase in the Stormwater Fund reflected after-
Thank you, but we don't need to go over the line, I don't-
Not necessarily, it's not an amendment, it's just changes to the entire budget.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols.
And also just the rewording of the fire equipment.
The capital part, exactly.
So I'll second.
And I have a second by Councilmember Oris, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Both.
And let the record reflect that the vote passed with Councilmember Nichols, Oris, and Ner in favor, and Councilmember Purnell opposed. Thank you. Agenda item number nine is the third quarter financial highlights for FY '22, and that's being led by our finance director, Natalie Flack.
So this is the third quarter, and in March 31st, for our, basically, you've seen those reports every quarter, this is summary of financial highlights for the third quarter, as I mentioned, and in March 31st, 2022, fiscal '22. And I'm just going to go through our normal highlights, as you reminded, the general fund is our operating fund, put it down, it's responsible for all of the resources under the general fund, revenues primarily received from the taxes, grant, license permits, other revenues such as high user revenues and slot revenues. All the changes to the budget that require the fund change as the total balance, through all was approved by the Mayor and Council. That is our general fund revenue portion, so just to go with the column to be familiar, on the left, you have July through March, the actual numbers, and the numbers as budgeted for fiscal '22, then we have an inference and a percent remaining, and then the same comparison even as an actual revenue collected for prior year. The property taxes, I'm glad to report that being collected in fully, there is actual, a little bit extra from overly what we've budgeted. Other taxes, that would be the property tax from the businesses like property and equipment at 262,000, we have 18 percent remaining. Licensing and permits, 125,000 collected as of March 31st. Intergovernmental revenues, that big amount is actual ARCA brand inclusive in that number, so we see that, I'm sorry, that's the next, contributed revenue. The intergovernmental revenues, it's all of the other brands that we received, like the county brands, the bigger brands. The contributed revenue brand, that's the big amount, 2.3, that's the ARCA fund, and the first portion that's been received already. Services charged to other funds, it's the overhead allocations and from the enterprise funds. We record that quarterly, so 25 percent remaining. Overall, we are at 8.7 million as of the third quarter of fiscal '22, on the very good past, 22 percent remain, which I truly believe that we will complete that by the end of the fiscal year. Summing breakdown, you've seen that slide before, it's our general fund revenues by source as budgeted, not as an actual amount, so the largest portion is the property tax. Then we have intergovernmental revenues, second large, and then we have services charged to other funds, which I mentioned is the overhead, and then we have small allocations out there. Expenses for general fund, general government at 1.1 million- Expenses for general fund, general government at 1.1 million, public safety at 1.8, public works 686,000, planning and community development 313, recreation and parks 39,000, debt services 248,000, and capital outlet projects completed or asset purchased as of March at 493. So we have expenditures remaining 33%, which is a good percentage because it's a little bit higher to expense than 25, which will left, would be left at the 100% for the full entire year. If we take into the consideration the ARCA grant contributed revenues from the revenue portal, the fund balance as of March at 1.6 million, comparatively to the fiscal '21, pretty much close by 60,000 difference, but it's a good increase. Expenses by the categories as budgeted, the largest amount is 28% for the general government, then we have, I'm sorry, the largest one, public safety, 32% government, general government 28%, public works 16, and then we have smaller departments, public planning and community development, recreation and parks, debt services and capital outlets. Changes in the fund balance as of March 31st, here we don't have a reflection of our additional allocation to reserve, that will be reflected in the last quarter because it happened in April, so the numbers represent, represented here as of March 31st. Non-spendable is due to, due from the other funds, consists of 1.6, including the stormwater and the sewer funds. Restricted funds is the slot revenues at 116,000. Committed is impact piece, we have 902, assigned, which we have insurance, some police forfeiture fund, stabilization reserve in the community center at 907,000. Unassigned, which the same amount that you see in the previous slide, is the difference between the revenues and expenditures of March 31st, it's 1.6. So overall total as at end of the March, 5.2 million dollars. Here, I'm now going to just go through the description, you've seen this all before, just for your preferences, what each fund, each balance in the general fund means and consists of. This slide represents a 2015 through 2021 fiscal year's comparison in the general fund balance. Each color represents non-spendable and assigned, restricted and committed. We can see for fiscal '21, our red portion, which is the middle path, is even larger, it's a good financial health indicator. The same thing broken down towards non-spendable, 1.6, restricted, 116, committed 902, assigned 907, and unassigned is 1.6, so the total is end of the March, 5.2 million. General fund capital projects and assets as completed as of March 31st. Building grounds, we have completed the project for the planning department roof, downhole windows, and we have a purchase of Flower Street land. Police department, purchase of two Chevrolet Pahos, Pacers and computer software, if you want the description of new stands, Arnold. For the streets, we have purchased Algen street sweeper and power washer, and then parks and recreations, we have roofs down for the two pavilions at the parks. If no questions about the general fund, I can go to electric.
I think we're done.
Okay. Electric fund, budgeted operating revenues at 5.3, actual as of March at 3.8, is a little bit above 25% in the revenues. Operating expenses, we have seen an increase for the purchase power, for the cost and generation diesel and fuel, so the number is a little bit higher. Personnel expenses at the pass of 25% to be remaining, supplies and operations, and a good pass of 64% remaining. Professional services contracted, then we have insurance, repairs and maintenance, and debt service, capital outlet 147,000. Overall, closing the third quarter for the electric, it's a little loss of $32,000, but I'm hoping by the end of the year it can balance. But from what I've seen so far, it's just a huge increase for the generation power and power purchase itself. Capital projects for electric, finished, the planned building roof, ADD relate been purchased, and substitution reclosures purchased, also the accident lights been installed earlier Water fund, Jamie and I had a conversation before the meeting, he's very happy to see the numbers.
Yes.
So water fund is doing much better, and we're hoping that will progress on the same path, especially the smart meter project upcoming. I have a little bit of concern going into fiscal '23, just to see how the expenditures laying out and the percent of increase overall in repairs and maintenance, as we talked before many times. But I'm hoping that smart meter project will help us to generate a better revenue for the water department. So the budget for water, it's at 937, the actual revenue collected, 798, is a little bit less than 25% remaining, which is a good thing. The whole and die operating expenses, I'm not going to go line by line, is at 702,000, we have 25% exact remaining, which is a very good indicator, and we have an income of 97,000 as of March. Sewer fund is in a very good position, the sewer services is, and we have special connection fees collected, and also holler fees is a huge help we're out there for this fiscal year. So the overall operating revenues at 2.7 million, and the expenditures at 1.6, but there are some debt services that are paid biannually, so the numbers are not reflected fully, that amount will be higher. Overall, as of March 31st, is a little bit over a million dollars in revenues for the sewer fund. Capital projects for water fund, finished Franklin, not finished, I'm sorry, those are in the process. The Franklin Avenue well, Harrison Avenue valves, Branch Street well, and the smart meter upgrade, there's a small amount with the RFP been paid to the engineering group to prepare and start the project. But all of the projects are ongoing for the water fund. Sewer fund, the same situation, small amounts, we sit out there for the East Lift Station, which is ongoing project, then we purchased the Kubota and done the HVAC system, and the Broad Street pump evaluation, it's just the beginning of the project, it's a small amount, but most of that going to be carried to fiscal '23. Here's our stormwater fund, and overall, so that amount right there, contributed revenue grant, that's our ARCA location, that's re-budgeted for fiscal '23. There will be nothing, pretty much done, it's just because we had it as an amended fiscal '22, and we will carry it over to fiscal '23. So service charges at 122,000 collected, and then we have all the expenditures of 104,000. If we take in the ARCA grant out of the revenue completely, we have a little bit of income of 18,000, is end of March. I'm hoping we will succeed to break that fund even or above. And there's no capital projects been completed, there's a small amount for the improvements, again, just for the engineering services, is the startup project for the Washington Street. So if you have any questions or suggestions, so we collect them tonight.
I would just like to say thank you for preparing that and for attending it. Any questions from the council for our finance director regarding the third quarter highlights for FY '22?
No questions, just to echo a thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, agenda item number 10 is acting town administrator's report.
Just a couple of things. Sorry, the contractor for the paving projects has looked at Stupider Park pathway again and actually got kind of creative and saved us about a little less than $10,000, so we'll actually see the savings on that project. You know, unless he uncovers the tip of an ancient pyramid or something.
Don't joke, Kim.
There's always that possibility. We're working with DBF, Jamie, Jimmy and I met on site with them to go further with the Stupider Park restroom project, so that's proceeding. We, the William Street Lift Station bidding project is active right now, we actually have a pre-bid meeting on Wednesday, and I believe the bid opening date on that is the 13th or 15th.
15th, and have everything from the mayor and council.
Right, the intent is to bring that before the 23rd to get it in the FY '22 fiscal We have installed time-controlled locks on the restrooms here on William Street, they will lock the restrooms overnight, we're hoping that, you know, that just makes things a little easier on everybody at the end of the day. The Henry Park restrooms, one of the doors was not latching properly, they're also addressing that. Then that is about it, we've been looking at the playground inspection report, and Caleb is working very hard on addressing a lot of the issues that are there. And actually, I guess I should introduce Caleb while I'm sitting here, this is our new.
Cody.
Cody, sorry, yeah, I'm having a night, our new public works superintendent.
Congratulations. He's not a, he's not an unfamiliar face, but he is new to the role of public works superintendent, so congratulations publicly. Any questions for our acting town administrator?
So when we get the new restroom build, or when you guys are looking at that plan, you're going to do the same kind of lock system?
That's our intent, yeah.
What time are the locks, like 7:00?
The locks in the parks, I want to say are 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, that they're unlocked. These locks here lock at 9:00 PM and unlock at 5:00 AM. And the reason for that is we have window shoppers in the evening, and in the morning we have a lot of walkers and runners early, so, and if that, if that doesn't seem to work, we can always make adjustments to that.
Whereas there's an event that runs later.
Yeah, usually events are done by that time, but Halloween would be a good example, New Year's Eve, yeah, we can adjust that as needed.
Any other questions for our acting town administrator? All right, thank you, we'll start our departmental reports with economic and community development director, Ivy Wells.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Last week I attended the National Main Street Conference in Richmond, Virginia, grant funded by Department of Public and Community Development, Main Street Improvement Grant. It was a worthwhile experience, I've already implemented some things that I've learned, and so look forward to a more pet-friendly Berlin in the future. Working on reimbursement beside grants, it always looks good when you apply for a grant that you've already spent the money that you've received previously, so we're always, like I said, we're always completed with our beside grant funding that we've received before. So for 50 to Celery, they applied for a beside grant, reimbursing them, and now our, our last one is, there's going to be a beside grant for the mural on Bruder Hill application, and then waiting on final work from the Pitts House to see what's going on with that, that's our last one. And just preparing for the, the other murals that are happening, Collinator Way, like I mentioned before, in between Gilbert's provisions and Island Creamery, that work's going to start taking place. And just some upcoming events, Berlin Farmers Markets every Sunday, 9 to 1, and the Berlin Chamber of Commerce, they are looking for racers for the Berlin Bantam Races, so contact Berlin Chamber of Commerce if you're interested. And then also this Saturday, there are free carriage rides downtown Berlin from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for our economic and community development director?
Yeah, I mean, just real quick, I mean, I know you weren't here last week, but can you just give a quick, first, how's the billboard coming?
It's, I think it's up already.
Oh.
I think it was put up today.
Oh.
They were working on it for a long time.
Wow. And I just want to, because I did get some questions, this was a third, third, third type of payment, correct, from third town, third county, third state, or was it third grant? How was the billboard paid for?
How was the billboard paid for? So there's a variety of grant funds that we've received over the last year, I mentioned that in my PowerPoint presentation when we went over the budget, and those grant funds are sitting in an account called Main Street Tourism Account. Those funds sit there, they're, they're not spent, so when we receive grant funding, donations, farmers market funding, all that money sits in the Main Street Tourism Account, and when I need to pay for something that's supposed to be grant funded, I use budgeted monies to pay for that, and then when, obviously when there's no more money left in the budget, I need to use money for the Main Street Tourism Account. So things that were previously paid for out of budgeted money was supposed to come from the Main Street Tourism Grant, that's a restricted account, I can't pull money from that. So it was, it was funded mostly by a grant from Worcester County, also funded by a Main Street Improvement Grant, there's a variety of monies that went into paying for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our economic and community development director? All right, up next is our planning director, Davey Morgan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, just a couple of quick things, like the weekly report said, we issued two certificates of occupancy, we issued four building permits, two for residential renovations, one for the addition of a detached garage slash hall building, and one fence permit. The Historic District Commission will meet next Wednesday, June 1st, at 5:30 PM. And one item that the mayor and I and Mary had discussed that I think we need to address at one of the June mayor and council meetings, under the short-term rental ordinance we passed, it's supposed to be in effect July 1 of 2022. We may want to discuss, and I'd like to discuss, an extension of that possibly till January 1, 2023, for the reason that we have some residents that were already operating a short-term rental, and for the season, they already had their reservations, their bookings, so they had their money invested in the property to upgrade it for that use, and now they would be refunding reservations or canceling. And, you know, there's more than one operator that's come to me and said, what's my alternative? They just want to finish out the season before they decide what to do with their property because we have that primary residence requirement in the, in the ordinance, and there was no grandfathering part of the ordinance that said, if you're already doing it, you can continue doing it. So some would be divesting themselves of these homes. So I think we needed to look, maybe look at an extension, let them get their things sorted out, and let them fulfill their 2022 reservations. Most of them said, you know, they kind of slowed down past Labor Day and into the fall, you know, with the weather, just like things happen in a resort in Ocean City. So I'd like to, if we can, have a discussion, I don't want to drop a surprise on anybody, but if we could have a discussion at one of the June meetings, that would be good.
And as Dave and Mary and I talked about, we'll put that on as a formal discussion item for our second meeting in June, but Dave, like he said, wanted to make sure that everybody was briefed on that before we had that discussion, so. Thank you. Any other questions for our planning director? All right, up next is our chief of police, Armidam.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We've had several meetings in the last two weeks, had 12 accidents before arrest in that time period, and on the 15th we did conduct interviews for police recruit. We had five applicants, two passed the testing, and we will We had five applicants, two passed the testing, and we will be setting up interviews. Kelsey?
Yes, it's Wednesday.
Wednesday. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the Chief of Police?
One of six sets this week, so.
Any questions for our Chief of Police? All right, up next, anything to report?
I have none.
Our, our town attorney, David Gaskell, that's a good thing that he has nothing to report. Up next is our Finance Director, Natalie Slay.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody, all departments, all department heads and all the employees for hard work through this budget season. Time spent together and I think things that have been discussed is very helpful for future planning. With that said, once the budget is installed, we will post that online so everybody can see. We will probably work a shorter version, but in maybe sometimes a couple of months that we'll probably highlight most, like a summary, so it's easier to read than just a regular report. I would like to see our budget to be presented for JFW for award in the nearest future, but I, I think extra work needs to be put in the place. Very thankful for my Finance Department and Customer Service for all the help through this process. Also want to thank Customer Service and Billing Department for implementing our paperless project that is going to go live. It's actually going live right now. I think we have a little bit more than 25 customers already sign up and receiving their bills electronically, basically to save the paper. There is a link on our website that you can click on and it will prompt you to the application information need to be submitted, or you can simply dial the phone number and the ladies downstairs will help to set up that. Also, there is a QR code that you can scan with your phone and will take you to the link. We will be placing a message on the next bills, on the paper bills. We're also going to be placing a sticker on the envelopes for the future billing only for several times to just increase the number of people. If you do sign up for paperless, it doesn't mean that you cannot opt out. If, if you don't like it, you can call and we can cancel you. You'll start receiving your paper bills in the mail as usually. Once you sign up, the first billing cycle, you will receive both just sure that you have a paper and an email. Also, the benefit of the e-billing, if you do sign up with the online account and receive the e-bills, you can get your notifications through the emails such as when your bill is due, if your bill is past due, you can view the bill. So there is a benefit behind all that. So I just encourage all the customers to look in this option and sign up so we can save on the paper and postage and manual labor as well. I would like to ask to proceed and bring forward our discussions for the water steward capital fees and the stone water fees. As we review in our funds, they're doing well, but I think going into the future and be more solid financially and look at the potential improvement for the capital, we need to look at those fees as were discussed initially. Once the year is approaching, we will be working on closing fiscal '22 and in a couple of months, we will be getting ready for the audit season. That's pretty much I have, what I have, if you have any questions.
The one thing I want to say is thank you for your team's work on the paperless billing side. I can't express enough the value in saving paper, but also helping the town reduce its postage costs. It does help with efficiency and things of that nature, so please sign up for e-billing.
And like I mentioned, it's not mandatory, it's not obligated, it's totally voluntary. And if a person signs up and then come to find out it's not working, you can always opt in and opt out.
Thank you. Any questions for our Finance Director?
The only thing I'll add to the e-billing conversation is we're timing the promotion of that for right before the bills go out. But right now, people can sign up for it. They go into the town webpage under your department's, under the Finance Department Resources. Or they can call and we can sign them up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone? Okay. Water Resources Director, Jamie Lach.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. HU Salz drilled the, completed drilling the well last week. I spoke with Mary briefly today. We have to do a 24, have to do an eight-hour flow test and a 24-hour test starting tomorrow. The line runs underneath in a culvert, makes a ninety, and then runs all the way down Walsh Lane. There's so many turns into it, it keeps blowing the hoses. We've had four ruptured hoses today. So I spoke with Mary today and we were going to make a, take some ductile iron pipe we have over to rains and stick the hose through it and then we're going to build a ramp. So on Brand Street there by Walsh Lane, there will be a ramp and we will have it barrow and cone. And I will get up with the state highway tomorrow morning to get some bump signs to put there because the straighter the line, the better. They have to develop the well, so there's a lot of, there's just a lot of tests that they have to do. There are computers sitting there watching the drawdown, you know, just pulling data for, for the whole time so they can make sure they get the right fit for the pump sizes and, and make sure the well's placed at the right depth for the town. So that will be, we'll be working on that tomorrow morning. Brand Street probably will be closed for a little, a little bit of time. Bramble has some asphalt mills from where they build out there on Bay Street. They're going to let us have them so we can build the ramp. We're going to work on that first day tomorrow morning if it's not pouring rain, but we have to get that going so they can do the pump test for 24 hours. I will get up with the chief because there will be a gentleman have to sit there for 24 hours with a computer running the test results all night long, so. But it's part of the course of the, getting the data for the well. Hopefully within a month, we should be able to get all the data and get our pump orders and get it in. And I would hope that by July 1st, we should see that well up and running. Rest of the stuff we've had, orderly mine, food line, we had to pull the meter out and change out of gas. We keep, trying to keep up on mowing, but we've been damp and wet. We're got a lot, a little bit behind, but we've had other things come up. 346E is working on troubleshooting electrical problem at the lift station and just working around the plant there and trying to get this well system straight out, straightened out and get going with that.
And we, we can't stress enough that this is a huge project for the town, replacing a 1940's water well.
Yes, it was, it was very neat watching them do it. I mean, I've watched many drills go, wells go in four inch, but this is completely different than what I've ever seen and I kind of found, found it a little fascinating. I mean, we have them on the farm, many of them, but you're never there to watch them, but we kind of had to help them because they were on such a tight spot. I mean, we actually had to take the town's backhoe, their backhoe over there and pick the drill ring up and move it. So I mean, it was, it was very unique and, you know, we, we did a lot of work in a, in a very small space. And I know it's kind of messy over there and stuff, but we will get it straightened up as soon as we can, you know, but I figured priorities is get this well online versus just like, I mean, we'll, we'll get it straightened up, but the house beside it was tore down just pretty fiercely too because of, of a fire, so I mean, it's, we'll get it straightened up.
And Jamie and I did meet, I reached out to our insurance with Legit and asked at what point do you insure this well? I mean, do we do it through this testing portion? So I'm still waiting a response from them because I, we just want to make sure we don't miss anything and something happened in that, in that timeframe. So once I know a little bit more, I'll pass it along to you guys.
And just a record, I mean, everybody, but it's, it, the well's roughly 105 feet deep. It was an 18-inch drill hole and it's a 12-inch casing. So right now with a four-inch well, right now they're flowing roughly 650 gallons a minute. I think we're going to look at probably going with a six-inch pump just to be, that way we can throttle it down so we can ramp it up and stuff like that, but this is all part of the developmental process. I mean, the way the gentleman was telling me today is, you know, they were sitting there with computers and they've got multiple probes in the well, the reading of pump data and all that, so it's, it's very intriguing.
It's interesting to watch. I watched a little bit of the drilling process.
Yes, the drilling was very, very deep.
It's pretty cool. All right, thank you. Any questions for Jamie? All right, up next is our new Superintendent of Public Works, Cody Chessen.
Good evening.
Good evening. You got to do it in Jimmy Charles's best radio voice.
Still working on that.
It's okay, you got it, son.
Like I said, last week was my first week of beginning my second week, trying to get scheduling down the day-to-day and made a lot of progress there. Everything's going great. Been working with the Beautification Committee, specifically on the War Memorial. They actually planted flowers out there last Friday. We've been watering them, taking care of them. Supposedly some new plants are coming in this week. I don't know whether and everything, if they're going to get planted. I guess we'll try to fit that in, but it's, it actually looks really great out there. They did great work. We've been trying to catch up on landscaping, grass cutting in the parks and stuff like that. We had a lot of standing water, Stephen and Gator Parks, and we've been trying to work around that, but we've kind of called up most of our areas up to this point. Looks like Jimmy's new pickup truck is getting close to completion, so that's good news for him. And as Mary said previously, we've been going over the playground inspections. Actually had a rep from Game Time Playground Equipment meeting us on Thursday to go over some of our options at Stephen and Gator Park and Henry Park. Some of the things that weren't up to code on the inspections, he's going to give us some, some options, maybe get some replacement slides and, and like equipment, replacement equipment, basically, so maybe we can get off to, up to code there. So that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. And it's part of my comments as well, but I can't stress enough how proud of the Berlin Beautification Committee we are. If you haven't taken a look at the War Memorial, the work that they've done there is excellent. They're also going to be working on the little flower bed that we tried to grow the Black Eyed Susans in, but apparently found out that we only had three inches of soil before we hit a pretty in-depth barrier. So the group is making progress on the, on the projects that are, are first and foremost, which is the War Memorial for Memorial Day, looks excellent, and then also the work downtown or behind Town Hall. The group will then transition to assessing the available public beds within the town and then working with hopefully Public Works and Economic Development to promote or adopt a flower bed program that's currently on the books. So thank you to you and Public Works and the Berlin Beautification Committee. Any questions for Cody? All right, up next is our Administrative Manager for one more meeting and then happy to announce that she will be changing roles, still containing a lot of her duties as Administrative Manager, but transitioning to the full HR Director role, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations publicly.
Thanks. We conducted open enrollment last week, so every staff member came in during that time and we went over, you know, a slew of things, so that worked out well. Ethics Commission will be holding a meeting on May 31st at noon. This will be the first meeting of this, this commission. They'll be reviewing the disclosure disclosures for the Mayor Council, boards and commissions, department heads, and candidates that have filed for the 2022 election so far. They will potentially have to meet one more time as we get closer to the election if there's people that file, you know, in, in this timeframe after they've reviewed them. But we're making sure we stay with state guidelines to have that done before July 1st, so. One last reminder that the elevator will be out of order on the morning of June 1st. It's a chairlift. I know it doesn't get used very often, but that'll be the morning where someone needs it, so I just want to keep saying that will not be in order on, on June 1st in the morning. As Arnold has mentioned, we have an interview with them on Wednesday and we also have several others. We have some Water Resources interviews, we have some Electric Department interviews, and then we just held two seasonal interviews where we did go ahead and onboard two seasonal employees for Public Works, and then we onboarded one this morning for Water Resources. He's been here every summer since 2016, so he's back. And then we are, I'm working with the department heads to start enforcing quarterly building safety checks. This is something that our insurance suggested we do, and actually I'm glad we have because Tim's pointed out a couple of things in their department that really need to be addressed. So we wouldn't have probably known without this checklist and going through. So I'm going to start doing those quarterly, have the departments complete them, return them to me, and then we can address any concerns they might have at that time, so. And then the last thing is we are seeing another rise in COVID cases, so I just want to remind everyone, if you're not feeling well, you know, stay home, wash your hands, basic stuff here, but let's, let's just be a little bit more mindful of that, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for our Administrative Manager, Kelsey Dunne? Up next will be comments from the Council and we'll start with Councilmember Purnell.
One thing I had asked about the sidewalk on Old Estadio Ward.
Yeah, I have an update for you.
Okay.
So that letter went to, so the question was an update on the sidewalk from Purnell Crossing the Main. And a letter went to State Highway. I followed up with Jay Meredith, and that is a little bit of a bigger project because of easements, it's all a state project, but it is on the books for them to work to get funding for. So there's progress, but not a definitive timeline. I'll keep you posted on that. Also, while we're in the same vein of SJA, you had asked a question, Councilmember Nair, about the speed here on Main Street. Statutory authority from what SJA told us, and this has been given to the Council, but for the public, is that that speed limit is 30 miles an hour. We were under that old limit, which is 25, but there's not much they can do about the statutory speed limit of 30 to reduce it to, I believe you asked for 15. So what we're doing is in an effort to better understand what's taking place, SJA will be coming out on Thursday and, yeah, I think a Thursday and a Friday in the afternoon hours to conduct a speed study here on Main Street to, to give us some data so that we can work towards those. And the last item that I followed up with SJA on was the crosswalks downtown, so we're working to try and get those bolstered up as well. Good question. Anything else?
Yeah, I'd just like to keep me apprised on what's going on with that.
Yeah, most definitely.
This guy hit with a walking dog there yesterday.
We don't want that. But thank you. Anything else? Councilmember Nichols?
I forgot to ask this question earlier. With the Board of Elections, you're minus one person and that person is needed in order for elections to take place, right?
Well, the code rates at the Board of Elections consist of five people. It can be, it can be done with a quorum, but it's not recommended, obviously.
So how long, what kind of timeframe, statute timeframe do we need to have that person installed before election time or?
My first meeting with the Board for the 2022 election will be in, last week of June, first week of July. I just haven't settled that date yet. They'll meet typically two more times before the actual election and then Election Day, which is a, a long day, but that's about the extent of it.
And that's our biggest, heaviest ask of the people that are.
Yes.
Joining the committee is that we are asking for their time fully on Election Day.
Well, that, that is their, their, at the end of the day, that's their primary purpose, is to conduct and, and judge the elections.
But to answer your question about when we're supposed to have Board of Elections members appointed is March. And due to.
No, no, I mean like winter.
I know, I'm just, I'm just saying that in general, like if people were looking at the code, it does determine that is, or outline that as March, but we, due to participation, we're not able to, we're trying to get every member, we can't, we still need one more.
Well, I was trying to, I guess where I was, where I was truly going was like in order, what's the 11th hour? How, at what moment, you know what I'm saying? What's the latest need?
As far as I'm concerned, we're in it.
Yeah, we're in it. We need everybody watching and we need one more Elections member. So we thought we had a full Board, but we're, we're down one.
So that's, yeah, that was what I was stating. So please, 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 whoever you are, somebody, please.
Somebody, please.
Isn't Darrell raising his hand back there?
Got to be a registered resident, so.
Got to be a registered voter of the town of Berlin.
Any other comments, Councilmember Nichols?
I don't believe so.
Thank you. Councilmember Nair?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I truly enjoyed the community bike ride last Friday. It was a great ride. We had excellent turnout. Zach, you kept us on course for five miles, so.
Actually, when we look at it, I think I made a couple of wrong turns, but nobody's lied, so. We ended up back where we needed to be, so.
It'd be great to see us do that more often.
It was, it was a lot of fun. Thank you, thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Councilmember Ward?
Yeah, real quick, I just wanted to touch on some things I mentioned earlier this evening. First, with the ARCA spending plan, I just want to make sure folks understand that these numbers are on the higher end, so things may come in less than what this is planning for. So I just wanted to, to mention that. And then I mentioned the Community Center. And then I mentioned the community center committee earlier, and the reason I did so was last year on this time, we set up the committee and wanted to give them funding. But I did want to follow up to see where we were on that and if we have any movement. I don't want folks to think that we've talked up the committee and community center and nothing's kind of moving. So do we have another update?
The committee's still in limbo because we have not been able to get together to bring all four of the parcels under one. And then I think we'll get to the, to the movement part. But Councilmember Nichols and I did speak about that last week. It's on my list last week. It actually did not make it out of my inbox or outbox, whatever Outlook has it as. But we do need to get the group, being the VCIA, the town representatives, and shore-up representatives together again. It'll be a meeting in June because they are busy planning their Memorial Day parade, our Memorial Day parade, and we do want to get that group together in June. So we'll have more of an update as far as that committee goes in June. But interested, I talked to one resident today that asked how, that lives in the neighborhood, that asked how they could give back. And I said, well, we are in limbo with that committee, but if you want to put your name in, we are gathering all of those names to hopefully be able to move forward soon.
Great.
A good question.
And then the only other thing is this, I don't really know where this goes. If this is for staff and mayor, mayor and staff. But one thing that I kind of miss from the packets, speaking of saving paper, is occasionally there would be like a letterhead staff report where staff would give their
Staff background.
Recommendation on whatever the topic was. And I was wondering if we could possibly get back to those specifically with things that maybe aren't budgeted so that we can have, because the first thing I ask is where's the funding? If we can have them like broken down on where the funding is coming from, what the staff, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that's a perfect.
And then I could just go in with the packet and do one-page requests there.
I don't think we'll hurt any trees on that. One page is not going to be that, or a couple pages, so.
So I appreciate, thank you for, for working on that. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes agenda item number 12. The only, agenda item number 13, comments from the mayor. The only thing I have in addition to the beautification committee and the bike ride is that I would like to ask this body to cancel our June 13th meeting. That's the first meeting that we would have in June. And the reason being that that coincides with Maryland Municipal League and the events taking place. And one of those is the ESAM dinner, which we get credit towards, toward Banner City. So we may not be here in this professional capacity, but we would be representing the town at that dinner. So I'm asking that we cancel the June 13th meeting.
I'll make a motion that we cancel the June 13th mayor and council meeting.
So a motion by Councilmember Wors.
Second?
A second by Councilmember Purnell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that our June 13th meeting will be canceled. We will meet the fourth Monday in June, which is the 27th. Thank you. That concludes my comments. Any questions or comments from the public? Just name and who you represent, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. Vincent Israel, Jr., 14008, Salinger Road, Ocean City, Maryland. Shortly after the commissioners narrowly passed the bond bill for the sports complex, a group of citizens got together and decided to form a committee. Under the law, we had to form a ballot issue committee to legally take the petition to referendum for the, to put the bond bill on the ballot. We've been out there gathering signatures throughout the county, all the way from Pocimote to Fisherville, Ocean City, Whalingeville, you name it. We've held, held two Town Hall style meetings, one in the Ocean Pines Library early on, a second one followed up about a week later in Pocimote for a small meeting. Regrettably, we didn't have an opportunity to form one here, but it was suggested that I come here to let your mayor and council know that we're out there. We encourage your citizens to reach out to a committee member. We have a lot of volunteers all over the county. There's some right here in Berlin working on it. I'd like to leave my number for the record. We're hoping to get some publicity. If you haven't been able to sign the petition and you need a volunteer to come to your door, you can reach me at 410-251-1360. And if it's okay with the mayor and council, I'll be outside your chambers on the sidewalk, available to collect any signatures from anyone here tonight. Thank you for your, the opportunity to come for you.
Thank you. And just because we are here together this evening, but there is a group of residents that I'm sure watch this via Zoom, so just repeat that number one more time, if you don't mind.
My number is 410-251-1360. And I'll make sure a volunteer gets to any resident in the Berlin area. I thank you.
What's your deadline for collecting signatures?
Well, the deadline we have right now is 3:00 PM on Tuesday, May 31st. Now, under the law, that we've been advised, if we gather 50.001 or 50.1 signatures of the required amount, by that date, we are in another 40 days, and that extends into July 8. We're pushing very hard in this final week to reach that threshold. Under the law, we're told, we need 10% of the total number of voters in the county. Now, the way it's working out is that number is growing day by day as people register for the upcoming primary. So it's a moving number that we always have to be chasing, if you pardon that expression. We initially set out to gather 2,500 signatures by that date, by the end of the first turn-in. I'm hoping that with the push we're mounting right now, we can reach 3,000 because you always want a margin to bear to cover your initial percentage. But right now, we really could use some help and some interest over the weekend, this last week, Memorial Day weekend, to turn in by Tuesday. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Israel. We definitely appreciate everything that you're doing.
Well, thank you, Councilmember, and we appreciate the effort that's gone out. We have almost 50 volunteers all over the county working on this. And I've been involved in petitions for many years, but this is truly a community-wide effort. I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank you all. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the mayor and council? Yes.
Dave Froschero, President, Portland Fire Company, Portland Fire Company Emergency Medical Services. I just had to clarify on the financial report, the unassigned fund balance of $1.16 million. That is truly unassigned and available to the mayor and council for emergency situations and what have you. That's truly unassigned.
That's right. Thank you.
Anybody else that wishes to address the mayor and council? Okay. Any, item number 15, comments from the press? Then in honor of Councilmember Burrell's absence, who would like to?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mayor, if you can hold it to yourself. Why? Well, you can take on your stuff. Doesn't it look safe? Okay, so, I'm like, I was like, yeah, she was literally like two seconds.
I see you walk in, I saw you walk out.
I was like, I was like, I was just, I used to see your face sometimes when you know.
Did he look crazy?
I was like, okay, see you. Yeah, that's kind of what he just, Jerry.
Kelsey?
Yes. I signed the two places right in back, right in the middle of it. Yes, and then I just put a date in there. Let me stop.
And sorry, that's.
You know, I'm, I can, I'm.
I'm going to tell you that that sign was the.